Welcome, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. Reconven to regular session. Roll call, please, Sally.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Welles.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marquez.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Present.
Thank you. 4.2 report out on closed session from June 22, 2022. The board accepted legal counsel's recommendation to move forward. Again, welcome, everyone. Muchas gracias a todos por estar aquí esta noche. Si necesita interpretación al español, por favor, llame al 978-990-5137 y presione el 8377041 y el símbolo de número. If you need to address the board for public, go ahead and fill out the Google Doc if you are online. And if you are in person, please make sure to fill out a card and provide it to the assistant here to my left. Any changes to the agenda? You're not. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Welles.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marquez.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
Do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Thank you. School community reports 9.1 information regarding recent panorama climate survey, spring administration results in comparison to fall administration results.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Tonight, Ms. Wolf, our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, will be providing you information in regarding the results from panorama survey that was given this past spring.
Hey. Good to go. First, I want to thank Jenny Tran, who's not able to be here tonight, for putting all of this information together. This and the coming iReady presentation that we'll see in just a few minutes, was put together by our coordinator of assessment, who is at home because she's about to give birth at any moment. And so we appreciate that she was able to finish this before leaving. So this is information for you tonight to take a look at the most recent panorama survey, our climate survey, that will start off with our year end information. But at the end of the presentation, we have the comparison between the fall administration. This is the first year we've given the panorama survey as a fall and spring climate assessment in order to see if we can measure growth or change over the school year. Though with that, let me explain to you how this information is prepared. The way the questions are asked, there are five possible responses to each question. And the students who take the survey are in grades three through five or six to eight. And so we have information reported out for both of those groups. We have family responses as well as we have school staff responses. And in all of the responses, as there are these five possible choices for each question, the way the panorama calculates a favorable response is if the response is either an almost never or once in a while response. And so there, within these five choices, the almost never and once in a while are considered favorable responses. So those two percentages are added together and calculated to give a total favorable response. So for example, this particular question, how often are people disrespectful to others in your classes? Fifteen, whoever these were, answered almost never, which was 52% of the total. And seven answered once in a while, which is 24%. And so when you add 52 and 24%, you come up with the 76% that responded favorably. So that's how we're looking at these results. And there we go. So we're going to look first at the student responses. We'll look first at grades three through five, and then we'll look at six through eight. There are 1,542 student responses, grades three through five, and 1,686 responses in grades six through eight. What we see, again, as we look through these, is that in, for both groups of students, there is largely a decline in favorable responses from the fall to the spring. It's difficult to compare to past years because each year in the past, we only gave the assessment in either the spring or in the winter of 2020, right before everybody went home. But this year, we did give it in the fall and we gave it in the spring. And so we're going to be taking a look at what the spring results are. And then again, ultimately, we'll take a look at the comparison to the fall results. And I'm not going to read each one of these, but what you can see here is what we, the response that has the star around it is the response that pulled down the rest of the scores. So when you look at the average of each one of these topics, the individual items are scored really at a more favorable response, but because of these outlier responses that pulled down the overall average. So in this particular question, for example, for grades six through eight, the students who responded, how connected do you feel to the adults at your school? There were only 23% who responded favorably to that question. But that impacted the other items, which some of them are close to 50%, right, which is a not bad score. So now moving forward. So with grades three through five and six through eight, we'll take a look at some of the overall responses and then some of the individual responses. So this is the school climate perception, and this is the overall social and learning climate of the school. Again, we see generally that grades three through five score the responses more favorably than grades six through eight. And again, we can see the outliers that ended up impacting the overall percentage. So again, for grades three through five, there was at least 60% or above favorable responses, except for the one item at your school. How much does the behavior of other students hurt or help your learning? Which is a similar response to this grade six through eight. So this is important information for us as we move forward and looking at the development of a more positive school climate. And I'll talk about that a little bit at the end. School engagement, again, overall for grades two through five, was a drop to about 49%. But again, that's like one and two, but significantly lower for grades six through eight. One and four marked that response favorably. And these are the questions that again, add up to that total overview of the school engagement with the outliers, again, highlighted by the, whatever shape that is. Sunburst. And again, I'm not going to read them individually. For school safety, again, we have higher percentages of favorable responses. Still a little bit of a drop for sixth or eighth grade from the fall assessment, but not significant. And again, these are the questions. And they're the same one, again, for grades three and three through five and six to eight. How often are people disrespectful to others at your school? And those responses ended up pulling down the average of the other questions, which were quite a bit higher in terms of favorable responses. The teacher-student relationships, again, higher for grades three through five at 74% and then a drop for grade six to eight to 49%. And there weren't particular outliers for that question, but in fact, they're fairly consistent in terms of the favorable response percentages. One of the questions is an open-ended question where students can write in their response to what are two things that the school does well, that it should continue to do. And then a word cloud is provided. And so for grades three through five, you can see that they like pizza. It's one of their favorite things. And steam is also rated very favorably. And for grades six to eight, good teachers, electives and events also rate very highly and frequently in their open-ended responses. Sports activities, but teachers show up a lot. What are two things that the school could do to improve? And again, grades three through five would like to see more pizza, more swings. I guess more help with yard duty, more recess. Grade six, we would like us to address the dress code. School lunch, bathrooms, food. Again, you can see probably allowing them to take their phones and see their responses. So our overall observation for these student survey results are that the percent favorable has declined to lower rates than the pre-pandemic years. And so we know that this is something that we need to be paying attention to and working on. And as I mentioned earlier, there are more positive responses from the students in grades three through five than in six through eight. And that sixth, eighth grade student survey scored less than 50% favorable in the majority of the topics. So we know that we need to focus on our upper grade students. So those are student survey results. Next, we have our family survey results. And we had 1,609 responses to our family survey. And this was available in English and Spanish, as is the student survey. And so you'll see a more consistent response with the family responses than in the students, where there was more of a drop. But we see from the fall to the spring, the responses remained relatively the same in terms of the perception of school safety. And one of the things to point out to you too is that the question asks about their perception of the student safety and psychological safety. This doesn't mean that they necessarily have experience in this area, but this is what, how they perceive it to be. And again, you see the one question that's impacted the overall percentage where, that were all pretty high, with the exception of how often do you worry about violence at your child's school? In terms of the perception of the overall social and learning climate of the school, again, very consistent in terms of over time, what the response to this question has been. And also very high scores in each one of the individual questions. Again, consistency in terms of the perception of how often students learn, discuss and confront issues of race and ethnicity and culture in the school, which was different than the student responses. And the one, again, that the outlier that pulled down the rest of the scores is the one at the bottom. We feel like the reasons for these really low responses is that students and parents have not been allowed on the campus for the past couple of years until very recently. It was just in April, I believe, after spring break, that we let volunteers and parents come back on campus after they had proof of their vaccinations. And we were starting to let some people back in. But so for the longest time then, for the past couple of years, families have not been able to be involved or interact onsite with the child's school. And so we feel that that's the reason for this low score. You can see that in the responses, in the individual responses. And these were the free responses. Again, these are the two things that the school does well and should continue to do. Very high ratings on communication, diversity, the school principals. And two things that we could do to improve is, again, some concerns about recess, the same with the kids. Lunch bullying and then campus. I'm not sure exactly what about the camps. I don't know if that's cleaning of the campus or upgrading of the campus, both of which I know that we're working on. Then we have our teacher and staff survey with a 44% response rate. And what we see here is a little bit of a difference between the teacher's responses and then the non-classroom staff to the same questions. And again, the outliers being highlighted. Yet somewhat fairly consistently over time in terms of the staff leadership relationships. Again, the outliers. Perceptions of faculty and staff relationships with the families at their school, again, fairly consistent over time. Similar outlier, and I can't read it because I am a glutton. Challenging to communicate with the families. And again, we think that that has a lot to do with the fact that people have not been able to be on campus in person for the past couple of years until fairly recently. Cultural awareness, again, the responses here. Again, this is the perception. Well, this is the actual experiences of the staff, different than that of the kids in terms of their responses. The outliers. And so what I'm going to show here that won't be able to be seen probably very well, but is available, and we can certainly share this, is the each question and the relationship between the fall and the spring scores by question. So we saw the spring scores on the screen, but here were the fall scores. We won't go through these one at a time. But that information is here and available. So what we know is that there are areas that we need to focus on for improvement, which is why we give this survey, is to not only validate the work that has been going on, but where we see that there needs to be improvement, that we are able to act on that. And so we need to work on the teacher-staff and administrative relationships. And one of the first steps that we're going to take is make sure that everyone has access to this information. And in August, when the site administrators return, we have time set aside that first week that they're back to meet and go over not only this data, but the iReady data that you're about to see in a minute and to talk with them about developing a plan of action and how we can support that from the Ed Services team, but as well as we need to bring in some support from HR. Our staff development team is also poised to support our administrators and teachers in working on these items. In the January Professional Development Day that we had this year, teachers in the middle school were given their site panorama data and guiding questions to talk through it, particularly in regards to the relationship perceptions of the students and some of the things that they had said and were concerned about and asked for some changes. And the teachers had time during that Professional Development Day to work on that and to come up with some individual plans for their classroom, for the grade level, for their sites. And so we will be building some of that time into the professional development when teachers return early, before school starts for the three days of training that they have in August. Also, is that they will also be getting this information and have some time to do some planning. Certainly, working on the communication between the staff and the families. And we believe that with, hopefully, with schools opening up so that more people can be on campus, that's going to be a very positive step in that direction. But that also, we work together and with the support from our communications team here to find additional ways to communicate with families that are, not everybody is connected to social media or has easy access to the internet because there's a lot of communication that goes out online. But how do we reengage families that would prefer to do that work in person? And so we'll be working on that next year as well. And then the cultural awareness among the school staff. This is already in place. And we already had a training with our administrators last week around this and with Greg Peters from SFS, San Francisco Coalition for Essential Small Schools, who will be meeting is one of our keynote speakers on that, one of those August days when all the teachers and the staff are back. And so that will be kicking off that work as well. And that must, that's the last line. No matter how many times I hit it, it's not going anywhere. So are there any questions?
Do any of you guys have any questions? I just heard a call.
Yeah, I forgot to ask.
Someone's.
Right, thank you.
Oh, my gosh. Sorry, you know, when you're on Zooms during the day and you're, have control of your own unmute. Anyway, sorry about that, everybody. So first of all, thank you very much for the data. And I'm really happy to hear that the teachers and the principals will be looking at the data for their sites and really come up with a plan. Because that's the whole, you know, that's one of the major purposes of it is we learn and then grow, right? So anyway, that's great. Really happy to hear that. I was curious, you know, we used to see, and I don't know if you've looked at this or if it was available, we used to see these little like bell curve-like things. And it would compare us to other school districts to get us a sense of where we landed. So it'd be sort of this curve. And then if we were sort of in the, do you remember what I'm talking about? So I don't know if that's.
So I haven't seen the bell curve, but I know that these are normed on national averages. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So I haven't seen the bell curve. So I can look for that because there's probably some additional ways to portray the information. But we know that the percentages are based on national averages, right? And so not only is it a percentage of responses, but that they are normed nationally. So the probably somewhere in this information, there are those additional charts.
But yeah, so the reason I was asking about it is it would be interesting to look at when you compare us with other districts, particularly for this year, are all the districts seeing a dip, right? In the various responses? Because we compared these questions compared to what we have seen over the years. And I would imagine that every district is seeing some dips just because of all the trauma that everybody's been through. And, you know, we know, you know, what's going on with students and staff and everybody feeling stressed and all that kind of stuff. So I don't need to necessarily see the data. I was just curious if you had looked at that because before, like, you know, we would, we would say, oh, well, that looks like a really low rating. It would be a 35% or a 30%. But then when we compared it with what other school districts were getting, actually, it was, it was right in that average. I mean, whether or not that, you know, you can also say, well, we still want to work on it. But it gives you some sense if you're an outlier school district for a particular question. And then you're saying it's normalized, but I'm not sure how that is.
Yeah, so that information is available.
Okay.
And so what we're seeing here is our results. But what we do have is that information compared to the national norm. So that is available. So I can send that.
Yeah, I might like just to see it because I think it would be helpful for us to have a sense of whether, you know, we're sort of an outlier in some of those. Because I do remember before, like, you know, we'd also look at the data and go, well, gosh, 68 is lower than 35. Well, that's in part, you know, where they're at developmentally and all of that. So some of that was sort of explained when you started to look at us and compared to other school districts. So again, you have had all these gazillion plans. So I don't, if it's easy to send out the data to us, fine, do it. If not, that's fine. But I think it might be useful going forward just for you, for at least us reflect on it. Because it, yeah, does that make sense? Okay, great. But you have done so much that I don't want to make an extra burden at this point.
So I think it's an available.
If it's an available report, then just send it. And if it's not, then don't. Because, yeah.
I think it is too. I think it's available.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Yeah, thanks for putting it together and for highlighting the focus areas for improvement and explaining to us what are sort of the interventions coming in. Because that's always the part that we're interested in. It's like, yes, we get the data, but then how are we going to respond to it? So do we? I can't remember. Are we going to hear an update in, from the fall, the fall results? And be able to look at the same questions? And is that, I don't remember if we get this update twice a year. We only get it at the end of the year for the.
So we didn't give it this, the update for the fall results this year because it was right in the middle of January, right? Where all that is going on. The results are on that slide that I showed you that has the link in here so that you can actually compare them. But what we can do moving forward next year, assuming that all is well, is that we will give you, when we get the assessment in the fall, we will give you the results right then. We won't wait until the spring.
Okay, cool. And does panorama break the results down by demographics? Is so that, like, at least for the site in the district to look at to see? Because it's super interesting. The communication shows up as one of the big words in Word Cloud. And yet we also see that communication is also a problem. So somebody's getting communication really well and somebody's not. And we can't, I can't tell from the aggregated numbers.
Yes, they do. And actually, the report that I sent you gives some similar information by student group. And so I can send that out as well.
That's awesome. Thanks, Liz.
Anyone else, Maria or Jenna? Do you guys have any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions. I just, I want to echo what Elisa said. I think those bell curves are really helpful. So if that's easy to do, I would appreciate that. Have room for improvement and a plan for that. Because, you know, we can do these surveys till we're below in the face. But if you don't use that data for making improvement, it's worthless. So thank you for that information too. So this is the first year we've done it twice. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the decision is to keep doing it twice a year going forward?
That's our plan at this time, so that we have pre and post for a comparison.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Liz, for all the work. And I'm looking forward to seeing next year's.
And same for me. Thank you and your team for doing this. My only question would be, and I know that we do work very well with communications. Again, as parents, we get a text and email. If you want to go onto the website, the information is there too. I'm just curious to know, I know in the past, and that was many years ago, where as parents, we would also get a call. I'm wondering if that would be something that we could push? Because when Mike talked about demographics, again, are people really looking at their texts or their email and actually responding to the survey? I know personally, there's times when you're just like, I'll look at it later and just later never comes and it's very unfortunate. So that would be my thing. If maybe moving forward, we could somehow try to see if we could push that way, maybe to see if we could get a little bit more responses. I do know that we do get notifications, you know, or reminders to go ahead and fill out. Just out of curiosity, if maybe that would work again? Because I know I haven't, other than, for example, as Kennedy parent, I get the call from the second harvest. We get the text and we get the call right away, right? So it actually makes you think a little bit more. And so I would, for parent engagement, I would think that would be a good idea. If again, if that's possible and to be able to get more parents involved. And then again, as far as students, I guess my question would be, when do we reach out to students? Do, are there in the classroom? And are there given time to fill out the survey during a certain period?
Yes, we open up a window of time. It's usually about a three-week window of time. And then the teachers are sent the links to give to their students so that they can take it in class. And we've asked the principals to talk with their staffs to ensure that there's time during the school day and that they schedule that. Because all, this is also happening at times where other testing and other things are taking place, right? So that they need to kind of manage that, that there's not too much all happening for the students. And so it should only take about 25 to 30 minutes. And so that we ask that they have class time to do it to also ensure that more students actually take it, right? Because they're right there in class taking it. And so that happened pretty widely, not everywhere. And so we know now where we need to push a little bit more to ensure that, you know, everyone's taking it. We sent out gentle reminders, right? We can see that no one's taken it yet at this grade level. So that is something that we learn too in terms of the administration of going forward. But the students get a link and then the teachers get links and the families get links, all of which are anonymous, right? So that they can take it right there and know that anything that they say will be not traceable. They can feel sure that they can say what they really think. They can feel sure that they can say what they really think. Great, thank you.
9.2 information regarding recent iReady diagnostic exam results and comparisons to fall results.
Okay, Ms. Wolf, that is you again with the iReady results. So I'll let you begin.
Once again, we're putting all of this together. I already found new information that you've seen iReady scores, you saw the comparison from the fall.
Thank you. So, um, so now we're seeing the spring results and we're able to compare them to the fall. And so we're able to actually see the growth that the students made over the course of a school year. The only grade level that didn't take the exam in the fall, so we don't have a full year of comparison scores for them is kindergarten. They don't take it when they first come to school, but we do have year end kindergarten information. So, um, we're starting off with the reading information and the green bar is the, the, the spring results and the orange bar is the fall results. And you'll see that, um, for the mid or above grade level, we made a pretty significant increase in reading. And this is everyone who took it. Not just by grade levels, it's the total student population as well as an increase on the early on grade level. Um, and you see the decrease in the three or more grade levels below and the two more grade levels below. So those are students moving up, right? Those are students who are pretty significantly behind that moved up at least one, if not two levels. And then the students who are probably more at the middle levels were moving up to at or above grade level. And so that's the overall look. And this is by grade level. And again, kindergarten, you just see, um, spring, you don't see a comparison. But you can see a very significant growth in reading for first grade, second grade, third grade. Um, and you see growth at every grade level, but it's really pretty significant in the lower grades, which is really something that we want to see. These little guys are learning how to read. Um, and so this is early on grade level also. This is a growth in each of these areas. So these are students who also are advancing. And then what you see here is particularly in first grade, you see the decline in the number of students who are reading one grade, grade level below. Right? And so those are students who moved up to add or above grade level. Fairly constant in, in the middle schools. And so that's something that we know we need to pay attention to in terms of the support at the upper grades for reading. And then again, a decline, particularly at the primary grades of the students who are scoring two grade levels below from the fall to the spring. And again, fairly consistent at the upper grades. And then for scoring three or more grade levels below, first and second grade students wouldn't be able, wouldn't have that metric, right? But you also see at every grade level, you see a decline in the number or, or in the percentages of students who are scoring three or more grade levels below. And here you see it more significant in the upper grades. So these guys who were significantly below moved up, they, they didn't get quite as far as we would have liked them to have gotten, but they did move up. And, um, this is English learners. And again, you see an increase in students who are reading at or above grade level, not nearly close enough to what we would like it to be, but at least it's increasing. Um, the significant growth is that students who are reading one grade level below. And then the decline in the students who are reading two or three grade levels below is significant as well, especially when you take a look at the percentages of students who are scoring three or more grade levels below in the fall at 46%. Right? That's one in two kids were scoring three or more grade levels below. And now it's one in three, which is not something that we're satisfied with, but it's movement in the right direction. For students with disabilities, also, we see that we need, um, to support the students in, in this category significantly because that while they are growing, it's not a percentage that, um, we're feeling is enough. Uh, we do our, the decline in the percentages of the students who are at three or more grade levels below is significant. And so they're moving up, but we would like to see the students, um, at or above grade level, that percentage increase. We also have the information for economically disadvantaged, um, our low income students who are also improving, um, and more students are reading at or above grade level. Um, and declining who are three or, or more, two or three, uh, or more grade levels below from the fall. And at some recent meeting, I believe someone asked for information about the homeless students. And so we, although there is a small number of students, we were able to disaggregate that information for you here as well. And again, we see similar trends and yet while the, there's increase on the early on or mid or above grade level, we would really like to see those numbers, of course, significantly improve. And this chart shows, um, the information in a different format. And what I think is, is helpful about this chart is if you look at the gray part of the circle, these are students that didn't change their levels, right? But what I think is important to point out to you is that the, um, the light gray color are students who began the year on grade level and finished the year on grade level. So while they didn't change, they didn't turn into above grade level. They also didn't drop to below grade level. They stayed on grade level, which is also fine, right? And so it's more of the, the darker gray that didn't change, who were below grade level and they stayed below grade level. So these are the children that we'll talk about in terms of interventions and some of our next steps going forward. Okay. So the same information for math. And again, you see, um, pretty significant growth from the fall to the spring and those students overall who are at or above grade level, kind of stayed the same for the one grade level below. And then the decrease in the percentages of students who are two or more grade levels below. And here they are by grade level. And again, kindergarten has no comparison, but you see a significant growth in math at each grade level. Um, early on, basically, um, you know, is an improvement. Probably more so again, in the primary grades. One or more grade levels below is the, the green bar you want to see dropped. Right? And it does again, more significantly in, in first grade. Um, and so again, we need, we see that, um, support is needed probably in the, um, upper grades. While, while there was a drop in some grade levels, it's not, it's not enough for us to be satisfied. Two or more grade levels below also dropped significantly in the primary grades. And then three or more grade levels below again, doesn't pertain to first and second grade, but also drop pretty significantly at every grade level. So there was movement in math at every grade level, um, for the students who are, who started the year pretty significantly behind. But again, this isn't, uh, percentages that we're satisfied with, that we think we're doing everything we need to do. Um, here is the information by English learner. And again, you see an improvement and the students who are scoring two to three levels below, probably many of them moving up to one grade level below, but also an increase in at or above grade level. Students with disabilities. Same, again, you need to put our emphasis here as well for next year. Low income, a significant decrease in two or more grade levels below. Homeless. Same. And then here's the chart, right? So the light gray stayed at the, at grade level, didn't change. It's the dark gray that didn't change and stayed below grade level. That we want to really, um, think about our, our strategies for the students. And then these are the students who met their annual typical growth. So this, um, what iReady does is gives information for each student. It calculates based on how they score in the fall. Based again, on their national, um, averages that they do. What, what percent growth should the students make in order to, um, make a, a year's worth of growth? And so that is, these are the percentages of students at each grade level who did that. And the fact that we have kindergarten students means that there are a few students that took, who took the, um, assessment at the very beginning of the year that we were able to compare to see what their growth was and if they met the growth. But otherwise, um, if the, the growth that the students made from the fall to the spring, was it a typical growth that they were expected to make? And this is the percentages of students who did. And that's, here's that same information in math. So we can talk now about some of our strategies, but it's also in the LCAP, which we'll be talking about soon as well. So it's up to you if you want to talk about it now or, or in goal three.
Any questions or comments?
Okay.
I think, I think waiting for the LCAP is probably the right place. That's where a lot of the interventions are.
Perfect. With, with that said, um, let's see.
But, but thank you, Liz, for putting this together and presenting all of the iReady data, breaking it down. The chart showing the growth, um, is tremendously helpful, that annual growth. I don't think we saw that in previous iReady presentations. That was, that was really nice to see. Um, so it's a, it's a good resource that we can use when we're thinking about the LCAP. Um, thank you and Jenny for putting it all together.
Yeah. And actually I just might add that I, I, I don't know if it was you or you and John collectively that kind of advocated for the iReady. But I think this is really helpful because one of the things we struggled with so much when we get the state data, which of course hasn't been available the last couple of years. It will be again this year, this, whenever we get it from them. But you know, a lot of times what you're looking at is, is, I mean, you could compare, you know, a cohort, but often you were looking at a whole different group of students as you were comparing. And so this is so useful to look at the fall and then look at the spring, right? And kind of see the growth because as you said, you know, we're looking for that growth. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. I think it, it really does help kind of show. And then I really liked the bar graph of the, you know, it looks like about a third of the students who really are not moving the way we want them to move. And so, um, so that, you know, and then we'll talk about that in the LCAP, but I think it's a really good way to look at the data, much better than how we've been presenting it with the state year over year over year, which just wasn't as helpful, I think. So this is great.
Okay, moving along, uh, 12.1, discussion on board meeting calendar for the 2022, 23 school year.
All right. So you have the draft of the 22, 23 school year board meetings. And, uh, what Ellie did was to look at the different holidays and the vacations and so forth that were going to occur during that time. And you know that we do follow and look closely at the Jewish holidays. So you will see the explanation, I believe, on the next page of what I'll, I'll give you the explanations. So the November board meeting dates are scheduled on the ninth and 16th due to Thanksgiving. And then, uh, the Thanksgiving break being, you know, it's November 23rd. So that's why we have a November. It's kind of different. April 19th and the 26th board meetings are scheduled at the end of the month due to April 5th being Passover. And April 12th being spring break. June 7th is placed on the list as a placeholder for a special board meeting and will be scheduled only if needed. So it's a placeholder. There's, there's nothing that'll be addressed for that meeting, not unless we need it for whatever reason. However, this is the week of graduations and promotions. Here we go again. And then, uh, and then this is open for discussion with the school board, you know, if you wanted to make any other different types of changes on here. But we took into consideration the holidays, not only the holidays that are regular throughout school year, but the Jewish holidays, which we know, um, we have put in place many years ago. Back when the previous superintendent was, was, um, the superintendent of the school district.
John, which one did you say is a placeholder?
Uh, it's the June 7th, I believe. Yeah, June 7th.
I had a question on, um, the September 21st. Why are we not meeting on the 28th then instead on the 21st? Because the 28th would be the fourth. Wait, is that? Yeah.
It could be Rosh Hashanah.
Yeah, I thought it was Rosh Hashanah. I was just looking, I was gonna look on my calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, it is Rosh Hashanah.
Okay, okay. All right. I may have a commitment on the 21st, but you know, as long as there's a quorum, it's will be fine. And I'll, I'll see if I can move that, but I'm not sure I can.
Okay. So this is just a draft, but I think we'll be ready for the next board meeting to bring it as an action item. Everybody's fine with that. Maria, you okay? And, and Janet?
Yeah, I appreciate seeing this ahead of time. I thought that it wasn't going to come to us until August. And that's why we wanted to see it ahead of time, but this looks good for me.
Yeah, no, it is helpful just planning purposes. So this is good.
Yeah, it looks good to me as well.
Great, thank you. And same for me. Um, so moving on, uh, to consent items, can I please get a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved, uh, second.
Pro call please.
Trustee McAbel. Aye. Trustee Walt.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson. Aye. Vice President Marquez.
Aye.
President Diaz-Lokum.
Aye.
Thank you. And on to 14.1, public hearing and discussion of the local control accountability plan. LCAP for 2022, 23.
Again, we've been doing this for many years now and how I wish we would change, but I don't think so. Uh, and Liz, thank you so much for putting this together. What is it? 140 some odd pages? I know as I kept reading and reading, I just said, it was never to be this long. It was never supposed to be this. I remember the first time we had the LCAP, I did it. I know, I think Wendy was at this one night, when I, I think it was what, 25 pages, if, if that, it was. And we thought that was crazy. And, and I just, oh my gosh, but thank you so much. And then meeting with the county and doing the minimal pieces that had to be done for them. So, um, I'll let you take it away now.
You might not believe it, but I do love the LCAP. Right? I, I, I get it, right? It really is an opportunity to bring all of your constituents together and be transparent about how you want to run your district and plan to really improve outcomes for kids. So it's a pain in the neck to write the whole thing, but the idea behind it, um, I think is good. And so I think in the spirit of that, starting off with a positive approach to, to talking about the LCAP in opening up the public hearing, I just, this is just a quick reminder that, um, why we're doing this is that, in terms of the law around our, our funding and, and the LCAP is that there needs to be this public hearing to get any additional recommendations and comments from, from you and from the public. Because we could make a change between now and next week when it comes back for, um, approval. So we'll be looking at the recommended actions and goals. And it is also connected to the budget and the budget overview for parents, which follows this, right? It's all part of one, one large plan. So, and then at the subsequent meeting, which is next week, we'll hopefully adopt the final version of this. And so just so you know, and some of you were involved in these meetings, um, we have had a number of meetings to get uh, input. It's not called stakeholder engagement anymore. It's now called educational partner input. And the first one was in January and that's when we had a new form to fill out, which was the LCAP supplement, which was the mid-year report as to how we were doing, what metrics we had available, how much money we had spent. Were we making any modifications to our planned goals and services? All of that. And so that came forth, we worked on that in January. And so that came forth, we worked on that in January, and it came to the board in February. So we then had our subsequent meetings in April and two in May to look at the second part of the year and to really take a look at the whole LCAP at this point to see where we were in terms of our planning, in terms of our actions and services, in terms of our metrics. And was it time to make some changes in recommendations for next year? Because as you remember, these are three-year plans, and last year was year one, or this current year is year one, going forward is year two. And so we can, we have made some some changes and we'll we'll highlight those. Um, we have not made changes in the goals, and so this is just a reminder of what our goals are. And they are, the first one is a very comprehensive overarching goal. It's about the the implementation of MTSS and making sure that every student in our district receives what they need in order to be academically, physically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally healthy and have their particular needs met when when they have have those needs, because the system has been put in place that identifies the supports that are needed by children at different times in their life. And so that's that's the the goal one, it's the huge goal, and there's a lot of information and actions and services that go with that, because it's a very comprehensive goal. Goal two is more of a focus goal and is focused on our English learners. And we want them to be progressing at one level per year on the LCAP and then reclassifying within five years of their tenure in our district. And so we have information about that. And then our goal around reading and math, which is related to the iReady information that we just looked at, is goal three. And that's that each student is making at least one year's growth for every year they're in school. But for the students who are behind, that they are accelerated, that we find ways to help them make a year and a half level of growth each year in order to accelerate their progress and get them up to grade level exposure. So you can't see this, and that's okay, because the the LCAP is there for for us to take a look at. This is just a reminder that all of these metrics are up to date and are in the LCAP. So for each LCAP, there are required metrics from the state, and so we have those, but we have some additional ones as well. And so on this next slide, we pulled out some of the highlights for these. There's a lot of written narrative about all of these in the LCAP, which isn't replicated here on the slides. But just to pull out the highlights, we have decreased in our suspension rate for our students with disabilities. And our spring panorama results show that students favorable measure regarding school safety and positive learning environment. There's a lot more metrics, a lot more information in there, but these are two that we just wanted to highlight. But with all this, there there are new actions and services, and so some of them are listed here or are returning, right? Because we felt that they were effective. And so one of them is ensuring that we are growing the electives program at our school sites, and that is continuing. It's still not at a level where we would like it to be, but that continues to be part of one of the actions and services in the LCAP. We are adding additional instructional assistance. One of the requests that we've had from schools, as well as one of the challenges that comes to us from the State Department is to try to maintain lower class size, particularly at our schools that are in greater need or are high priority because of our our numbers of unduplicated pupils. And so because we know that we're challenged in finding additional teachers for for our students, as well as additional classrooms for our students, we are hiring additional instructional assistants to be able to push into classrooms and to work with teachers in small group instruction and reading and math. And we're putting together some plans for training for the instructional assistants so that they are able to make to identify some student needs and to help the teachers support those needs in addition to being to working with the teachers and getting their feedback. We are putting in additional social emotional supports and curriculum. We are looking at, I don't know if this comes up later or not, adding some, yeah, I see it here, additional mental health supports that will be provided at each school site. And that has, we were considering hiring additional mental health counselors, but have decided instead to contract with services because we didn't want to hire people that we might not be able to sustain in employment. So we are providing additional support to school sites for social emotional support through mental health supports. And we'll be using a new curriculum that will be provided to us by the San Mateo County Office of Education, free of charge. We are providing restorative justice trainings, and we're starting with a small cohort of schools to get started with this training, and then we'll be broadening out to other schools to to become involved. And that's being handled by Patrina Redd, and we're working with an organization called Circle Up that will be doing this training. PBIS support is also going to be enhanced. We've already, we've met with the Sam Santa Clara County Office of Education PBIS team, and they are also, a lot of our model is working with a small number of schools and getting, you know, in depth with them and then moving out from there. So we've got two or three schools that will be working with us and the Santa Clara County Office of Education, and they will partner up and come to the school sites, do some assessments, do some training, support the the PBIS teams at the sites, do some coaching. So we're working with them and are very looking, very much looking forward to that. We have an attendance focus. It's, we know that we have a very high chronic absentee rate this past year, and a lot of that, of course, had to do with COVID and the expectation that kids stay home every time there was a contact or every time that they were sick or had a sore throat, they, so our attendance rates were poor. So I'm gonna click on this. So we've got our Student Services Director, Antonio Perez, has been working on developing a system for for monitoring and then encouraging improved attendance. And this is a tiered system that he is working on, and we'll also be sharing this with the administrators when they come back in August and be working with them for this kind of support. And so there's information here about the different, different things that are already in place, but that can also be added. And we met today also with the Everyday Labs organization that works with us. And these are, this is the group that sends out letters encouraging attendance. They're, right now, they're paid for by the Big Lift, and they send letters to kindergarten, first and second grade. And so here, this is their report, and their belief is that by sending home what they're calling nudges, nudging letters, friendly nudges, that they have had an impact in having more kids come to school more regularly because of the positive nature of these letters that are going home, along with some listed resources for families. They have also offered to send these letters for a cost to all the kids at in the grade levels. And so we're going to meet and consider doing that. We'll see what the pricing is for that. If in fact, that does make a difference to get these friendly nudges, which their research shows that it does. So that's something else that we're going to be doing about attendance, additional mental health supports I spoke about. We are adding more tutoring. There is in goal three, there's a link to the tutoring that I've mentioned in there as well. We have our, one of our office assistants has a background in tutoring. In fact, that's the organization that she came from before she came to work with us. And so she has set up an amazing tutoring structure at the school sites, where we had a number of of teachers who are participating, because they really believe that teachers tutoring their own children makes the biggest difference, because they know what the children need to learn, and it really helps also develop a stronger relationship with the students who may not have the best relationship with the teacher at that time, because they may be underperforming, but the teacher reaches out to them and they work with them once or twice a week. They stay after school. Our offices improvise them with with materials, with rewards, with all sorts of stuff that has been going on. And so we're going to be extending that. We started that this year, and it grew. And we know that it's starting at the beginning of the year. Next year, it will grow even more. We're also meeting with Healthy Cities tomorrow to talk to them about their structure, which is also very effective at the school sites. And so we're we're just, we're increasing the amount of tutoring that will be taking place. We are also increasing the number of reading specialists. Each school has a reading specialist right now. And at our high priority schools, we are adding additional reading support at their sites. Again, some of this is dependent on if we can find the people, but we have been helped by HR and lots and lots of advertising for the physicians and, you know, immediately, as soon as somebody applies, set them up for an interview and try to ascertain if they'd be a good match for our schools in our district. We, as you know, we're continuing our community schools, and we're bolstering that support as well. We have a plan for additional potential community schools. If we have the funding, we're going to be applying for a grant that is coming up potentially in the fall, if not early winter, where we can expand our community school support to include more onsite supports for families and parents. And so we're we're looking at that to see how we can provide more wraparound services. That has to be funded by the legislature at this point, and so we're waiting to hear from that. But it was funded for round one, and so they're assuming it will be funded again for round two. That outreach to chronically absent, I mentioned that. We, several of our schools have asked for additional support for behavior. And so that is also, we had considered potentially hiring people to do that, but that will also be contracted services as well, rather than hire someone who we only have funding for a year. And then the system monitoring, we have, we're putting in place a pretty comprehensive data system that has taken a long time to to get up and running, but we were almost there and we're starting, we're setting up the training for the the site admin again, and August is going to be busy, for them to come and see how to use this new program, which is called EduClimber. It's produced by Illuminate, which is a pretty standard. A lot of people use Illuminate services, and there, it's all set up to also support a tiered systems of support that we can monitor interventions and who's in the interventions and are they being successful? And so it will help us with our with our MTSS rollout. Let's go one. Goal two, again, this is our EL goal, and so that's our English learner information, again, small to read, but we pulled out the highlights for that here. This year, two hundred and twenty-three students were reclassified. And so we are proud of that, and these are the numbers of kids based on that, those two hundred and twenty-three kids, based on how long they have been here in the district, right? So we're looking to see if we are starting to meet our goal of students within five years. And so this year, fifty-six percent of the students who reclassified were within five years of their start date in the school district. And so our actions for them are continuing to support additional ELD teachers at the middle schools, and we are working on a newcomer program. This, a lot of this depends on whether we can find the the right match for the teachers. But we are looking at starting a program similar to what we had many, many years ago, where the students who are recently arrived in the country have, for a period of time, have a special program to go to and rather than just kind of put out into the schools. And so this would be a program that'd be staffed with smaller class sizes with space for the new coming incoming students, because right now, the the placement is a little tricky, and they might be separated wherever there's room, and they might be separated from their family members, and then we have to find them transportation because they're not close to their home. So we're trying to make their welcome to the United States more more seamless and that their program is really specially designed for recently arrived students. And so that there would also be outreach to the families, and we've got, we've got some TOSAs who are who are already doing this, and and Michelle Ramon, of course, who does this as well, who really looks to see what are the additional needs that the newcomers have in addition to their educational program. There's often other needs that the families have based on their experiences in getting here. And so we want to really focus on the students, making sure that the teachers have the materials that they need to teach designated and integrated ELD. And our Director of ELD, Leslie D'Nelli, is working a lot on the development of some trainings for teachers, working with our, you heard our Lourdes and Mariela, two of our TOSAs who are designing the integrated units that are really designed to support the English learner. So there's a lot of information in there about how we're going to support and expand those programs. And goal number three is the the reading and math goal, I mentioned earlier. And so you just saw a lot of the results, but here we pulled out some of our highlights. And what our actions and services are around here is that we know that our math curriculum is not strong. And there's a variety of things that are being used for math. There's not a consistent math program across the district. And so we've got our two math TOSAs who are working very diligently with a a group of math pilators that represent the different schools and the different grade levels, who spent this whole year reading the framework and learning about math and analyzing the materials that were available. And next year, we'll be actually piloting the materials. And so they're piloting three different curricula, and so we'll be bringing information to you about that next year. A new thing that's just coming up that we're adding to the to our menu of services here is math intervention materials. And this is curriculum that's actually being used and sort of, we're seeing it as a little pilot in summer school, and it's called Math for Love. And this this link is to a little video, which I'm not going to show, where the people who designed it are talking about the curriculum, and it's all about the development of math thinking through games. And so we'll see how this goes with our students in summer school and how they learn. And 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 so far, there's been a couple of days of school, and they've been enjoying this very much. But we have this curriculum for each grade level and can use this in this coming school year for small group math interventions. Like I mentioned earlier, there will be additional reading specialists at the priority sites, the instructional assistants, increased tutoring. And then we have a number of our TOSAs who are right now taking additional training in the with the California Reading and Lit Project around reading and writing strategies, because we know that needs to continue to be a focus, particularly with our English learners. And so the professional development that they're receiving will also be provided and rolled out across our sites by our staff development TOSAs. And so then what you'll see is, here's our percentages of unduplicated pupils. Not everybody across the district is all getting the same amount of supports, because we, this is meant to be a document that really prioritizes funding at the higher need sites. And each, as you saw on page four hundred and seventy-two or whatever of of the LCAP, that each one of the items needed to be justified for the schools. And so the schools needed to be at least fifty-five percent or above unduplicated pupil. And so that's who these are, and you can see there are some that are far above that. And so the schools that are below fifty-five percent are not receiving as much support from the LCAP. I mean, they're getting other funding from other things, but this is who this document is meant to serve. And so this is the breakdown of that funding, and this is on one of the pages at the end of the LCAP in terms of our our total funds and how that our carryover, and I know this is all what we're still going to be talking about next. But this is just, these next couple of slides are the list of items that are focused on supporting the unduplicated pupils at those school sites. And so this is from goal one. And then goal two and goal three. And again, this is just for transparency for the public so that it's highlighted. Anybody's watching who wants to know how we're spending our money, if we're spending it in the way we're supposed to, we are. So our next steps is the LCAP adoption comes up next Tuesday and then Wednesday, sorry. And then after that, I need to send it to the county office for approval. It's very likely that they'll want additional justifications of some of these, because then they they usually do. And so it's possible that I may need a brack. They won't ask us to change anything. There just may need to be more written justification of some of the funding. And they'll let me know if I need to bring it back to you to see, or if it's just something that just is an easy thing to change and and then, but I'll let you know what what the feedback is. But that probably won't happen until August or September. So are there questions?
Are there any questions or comments?
I love reading the LCAP. Thank you for putting it together. It's such a descriptive story of what's going on in the district. I'm, you know, as part on the LCAP committee, a lot of the site administrators that were participating in it were always always talking about the mental health services. So it's great to see that we're finding a way to continue to do that responsibly and expand that. And that was really, really good to see. The feedback for the community schools was like off the charts. That was included in there. I was super, super excited to see that, and and I hadn't. I was super, super excited to see that. And, and I hadn't realized from reading it that we're actually able to expand it. It was one of my, one of my questions of should we be doing more here, given that? So hopefully we'll get the grant and the, the funding will come in and we'll be able to continue to expand that. And the tutoring, I think we imagined was going to be successful, but it was, it was neat to read about how it's helping them academically and as well as making that connection with the teacher. It's sort of got like multiple levels of benefits in there. So that was, that was neat. Also, the way it's, just the way the actions are set up around the MTSS tiers, it makes the document, in my opinion, really understandable to know, okay, this is an intervention versus this is a base level of support. So I, I like that a lot. One of the common thing, one of the common challenges across all the goals that we had, I mean, we've been talking about a lot is staffing. And so one of the questions I had, and it might be for Wendy was like, are we, what? Are we, yeah, like, are, are we gonna, are there things we're going to try differently in the 2223 school year to be able to try and, or are there things we're expecting to be different around being able to fill some of those positions? So that we can, you know, see some of those actions get implemented.
So there's the common ways that we, of course, hire and, and that's traditionally through EdJoin. That is the main platform for educators that are looking to go into the profession. But we've definitely increased our game on social media. We've had our recent job fairs, of course, which did actually bring in some traffic. But the positions that we're looking at tonight require some years of service too. We can't just jump in and be a teacher on special assignment in most cases or certain, you know, that you need experience and so forth. And so I know, like Liz just reached out to her retiree, perfect example. So we're starting to sort of stretch outside our more traditional ways to, to solicit people. And we knew this was coming tonight, but we started looking ahead and getting the list and posting more, to having a lot more, we did our referral process actually that brought in 20 people. Or just people that are referring friends and other people that they know. So those are some of the items that we've been working on. But yes, I'm, I'm, it is a challenge, especially in the instructional assistant, our pair educators now, our pair professionals. However, we've traditionally hired pair educators that are focusing on special education. And now we're branching out in other ways. And so that may bring a different group of people that might be interested in working in a, in a different way with students. So. Anyone else?
I just want to thank you, Liz, for putting it all together and for aligning all the goals. It says, Mike said, it's really nice to see how it all fits together. And I know it's a lot of work. So thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, I would echo that. Just appreciate all the, the time and work that you've put into this, Liz. It's really, it's easy to read and it's very helpful for us. So thank you. And I'm glad to hear that you enjoy it because I know you spend a lot of time. And I want to think, I think it's Elisa and Mike that sit on the LCAP committee too. That, that's actually a significant time commitment to set up on that. So I just want to thank you two for being there.
And again, same, thank you and your team for putting this together. My question regarding the EL progress, I know that we set for a minimum of one level on the LCAP. I'm just wondering if, obviously they're learning English as they're going, but if we've ever maybe tried to shift and see if, would one level be, let's just say enough, or can we push them and challenge them a little more to where we want to get them up to maybe two levels up, right? So that maybe they can be reclassified sooner than later. That would be my first question. Do you want to answer that before? Yeah, okay, thanks.
So the expectation from the state department is one level a year. And so that's kind of where we, so that's why we chose that. But I can certainly talk to our director of ELD to see, I think probably at the lower levels, they probably make a little bit more rapid progress. But at the upper levels, they're expected to, to write and, you know, do a lot more. And so that's going to, that, that would take longer, but it's possible that those earlier levels that they advance more quickly and that. So we can talk about that.
And then kind of on the same note, I know for the LCAP, the, the students take the test. Do parents get feedback after the students take the test? Or is this just something that happens every year?
Do they get a letter, right? Yeah. Our expert is sitting right over here. So the parents are notified and of the results of the LCAP. But where the parents are also pretty significantly involved is when it's time to reclassify, because then parents are contacted and they have a little interview. And Evelyn has been one of the people who's been doing this to ensure that the parents believe that it's in the best interest of their child to reclassify them as well. So there's probably a bigger interaction with the parents when they're at a higher level of proficiency. And at the beginning levels of proficiency is a notification of test results, kind of like on the cast, but like they get a letter. And if they have any questions, then they call and we can explain it to them.
And then I had written, if they do get a notification or feedback, do they get reminded? Or something along those lines where how they can actually help their students perhaps do better the following year?
So this is information that is shared at the D-LAC meetings. And again, not everybody comes to those. Certainly we would like to have a lot more participation in those. But I know that the ELD department has prepared a, a number of resources that can be shared with parents. And so those resources are shared through the D-LAC, but then they're also shared through school sites and, and are sent out, you know, to, to families. I think because we've been more challenged this year with not having any meetings in person for some families, that's difficult to, to get information online and email and that kind of thing. And so I think if we have that chance to get back in person again soon, then more people will be able to have more access to that. But in addition to that, I know that we've got Michelle Ramon, who works with families and provides resources. And then we've got the Familias Unidas, who does training with parents as well. And also it takes up a lot of these topics and provides a lot of resources and information to families about this.
There's also the conferences when the teachers have the conference.
Sure, yes.
That's another piece that's brought up, the EL portion.
Thanks. And then my only other comment on goal two. I do appreciate the development of the newcomer program, because I do think, again, as a newcomer myself many years ago, there was a difference between me going to a newcomer center versus my sister attending in English only, where you're actually more obligated to learn English quicker. But yet anxiety wise, I think it's best, as Elisa was for me, right? Where you feel more comfortable talking to your teacher and therefore maybe it, it may take you just a little longer, but at the same time, the, the welcoming and the comfortable of the classroom may get them, again, more comfortable. And then the parents will therefore feel comfortable dropping off their kids at this program. So, I mean, I know just from experience, I know I appreciated that. So thank you. And I don't have any other comments.
So, yeah, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you very much. And I, I agree. I mean, I know it's a lot of work, but I think it's a really useful document and it keeps us focused on these goals. And, you know, what are the strategies we're going to use to meet these goals? And I also wanted to add, Mike, you know, we do sit on the committee and the, the depth and breadth of knowledge by the participants, you know, our principals and staff is amazing. And just the care and nurturing that they have for their students. I mean, and we really did have some really very in-depth conversations. And I know that a lot of work was done, you know, in those meetings. And then I just want to also give a shout out to the parents who made time for it. Cause I know it's, it's a big commitment of time for them to, to make the meetings. So I don't know that any of them are on the call tonight, but.
Leslie's on.
Oh, that's great. That's great. So you can pass that on to the parents who participated that we really appreciate it. And I think it, it makes for a better outcome, you know, for all students that they participate.
I think that's the best part of the LCAP is I, I know it was called stakeholders and now it's education partner input. But that's the best part, I think, about the LCAP is the meetings you have. That's the best part.
Okay.
Item 14.2, the local control funding formula, LCFF, budget overview for parents. Okay, good evening, everyone. The LCFF budget overview for parents is actually the first four pages in the LCAP report, but it's required under ed code to be presented for public hearing. The main objective is to make sure that the cost of each of the actions and services identified in the LCAP are funded in the proposed budget. So what I'm going to share with you today is the supporting document for the chart in that four, four pages of the LCAP. So I'm going to share this report. Hopefully you can read them. This, this, can you see this?
Yes.
So the budget overview for parents, the, these first two pages here is the template from the Department of Education, but we're using DTS software, which also shows the, the CDE template. So these first page here is the source for, for the chart that is reflected in the LCAP report. So as you can see, the total revenue in the proposed budget for 22, 23, 126.2 million. And out of that is 86.5 million of the LCFF entitlement. Out of this money includes the supplemental on concentration grant, which is in the LCAP. And this is required to be spent to improve or increase services to unduplicated pupils. So that amount is included in these total LCFF funds. So the other components of our revenue, which you will also see when I, we talk about the proposed preliminary budget, is the state funds of 23.5, our local funds is 7.7 million, and then federal is 8.4. So that's the total revenue for next year as proposed. So on the expenditure side for 2223 year, the total expenditure is 130.8 million. So in the LCAP for goals one, two, and three, the total expenditures for each of the actions and services identified is 75.2 million. And then for the high needs are duplicated pupil, the expenditures 11, 11.1 million. As you can see, the supplemental concentration grant calculated amount is nine million only, but the expenditures 11.1 million. And that's because we are including the estimated carryover balances from the 2122 budget for the current year. So then out of the 130.8 million, 55.6 million is not in the LCAP. So that's a question here, why are there 55.6 million that are not included in the LCAP? And so that's required to be disclosed in the budget overview for parents. And in general, what's not included in the LCAP are anything that's not instructional related. So we have the salaries and benefits of our departments, payroll, accounting, HR, technology, maintenance and operations. And also a large part of that is the COVID-19 relief funding that are included in the 2223 budget. If those are planned to be spent for non-instructional related expenditures, those are also not included in the LCAP. So briefly, that's what's in this 55.6 million that's not in the LCAP. So the other questions too, in this, in the BOP, budget overview for parents, is disclosure of what happened in 2122. So in our annual update of the 2122 year, the total budgeted expenditure is 6.7 million. This is reduced by the carryover that I've mentioned here, the 2.9 million. And the actual expenditures that we're estimating when we close the books this year is about 5.5 million. So there's a difference in of 1.3 million of what we have budgeted and what we're estimating to spend by year end. So then we are also required to explain that, why we did not fully spend what we said we will in 2122. And that's basically because of the pandemic. There's a lot of things of the actions and services included in 2122 that did not happen because we are not, because of the challenges and difficulties that we've experienced in hiring qualified staff and, and, and some of the services that were supposed to be provided, like the contracted services. However, even if we did not spend them all in 2122, we made sure that all the unspent local control funding formula for the supplement on concentration grant for unduplicated pupils are carried over in 2223 year to be spent also only for the principally for high needs students. So, so with this data that's provided in this couple of pages, then you'll see the charts in the LCAP report. So this is basically the total 126.2 total funding. 69% of the district total funds come from LCFF entitlement. And out of the 86.5 is the nine million that's generated by our unduplicated pupils. So again, the next chart is the expenditure part. 130.8 million is our total revenue expenditure and only 75.2 is in the LCAP, as I've mentioned, because we didn't put in the LCAP the non-instructional related expenses. And then the last chart here is the vision, information about the 2122 update. So this is for fiscal transparency purposes only. And based on this information, all of the goals, actions and services for all three goals are fully funded in the proposed budget for 2223. Are there any questions?
No question.
So I had one question. I actually sent it to Liz and I realized I should have sent it to you. And I sent it late today because I was reading, I was kind of rereading a few things and it popped up to me. So I apologize for the late, late notice on it. You know, I was a little bit surprised that, trying to, I'll look here since I don't have control of that. A little surprised that it's 55 million for what's considered the non-instructional component. And I was just curious, does that also include things like contracts that we have with some specialists and teachers and things like that? It just seems high to me. And maybe you could talk a little bit about that.
We can also provide that information when we talk about the budget.
Okay, that's, that, that's helpful, because I, I think when we say non-instructional, I'm sort of wondering if that's actually, I mean, maybe that's the verbiage you have to use with the state, but I guess I don't think about it in that regard, because some of the contracts we have are in fact very direct to instruction, right? But it may be a contract and not a staff person. So I just worry a little bit that when you look at that, you know, that's what it looks like, but it may just be that that's how you have to present it via the state.
Yeah. The other thing that maybe I should also add here is the special ed program. Not all of the budget for special ed program is included in here. And that includes also contract for non-public schools, which is a large part of the expenditure for special ed.
So, so I, thank you, because that's sort of what I was assuming. And I don't know if there's a way to make that a little clearer in the description, but I do have concerns that if you just read it the way it is, it may come across that there's sort of 55 million in overhead for the students.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean? And that's not true, because that's what I assumed, that some of that is special ed, you know, contract. I mean, it's a lot of stuff that actually is, but maybe we don't consider that instructional. I, you know, it is, it is a weird terminology, but I think it's important to know that it's actually still meeting the needs of students, like that 55 million, it's not all payroll and accounting and that sort of thing. That's actually a smaller. It's not all payroll and accounting and that sort of thing. That's actually a smaller portion of the overall fifty five million. A bulk of that is actually directly going for student needs. So I don't know if there's a way to say that.
Yeah, I think that's very important information that we should add here on.
That'd be great. I really appreciate that. Yeah.
I forgot about special ed. There's some special ed actions and services, but it does not equal to twenty six million, which
Right.
what we were spending for special ed program.
Right, right. So maybe just a sentence in there would be helpful just to further explain that. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so are there further questions on the budget overview for parents?
Okay, um, thank you, Priscilla, for the presentation. Um, moving forward, fourteen point three proposed preliminary budget for twenty twenty two, twenty three fiscal year.
Okay, so that's my part. So let me go back again and share my screen. Okay, so we're presenting tonight the proposed budget for the twenty two, twenty three. We're presenting it for public hearing and adoption would be at the next meeting. So for the adoption of the budget is mandated by education code section five two zero seven zero. And it's due July first of each year. Their basic requirements for budget adoption, one is to hold a public hearing, which we're doing today. And then some of the basic requirements also is that the proposed budget must conform to the criterion standards adopted by the State Board of Education. And that's basically is the SACS or the state standard account accounting. It's that account code structure, which is which is included in the report for now with more of the supplemental information to be presented at budget adoption. So also it requires that the proposed budget would meet the financial obligation of the district for the budget year and for multi-year financial commitments. So with the proposed budget, I believe that we are able to meet this basic requirements. And then the other one is that it must also fund all the expenditures necessary to implement the LCAP or the annual update to the current year LCAP. And then the last basic requirement is that we would provide a statement of reasons for anything on the components of ending balance, the assigned and unassigned a portion of it that are in excess of the minimum recommended three percent preserve for Redwood City School District. And that's a separate agenda item for tonight. And then, of course, this is subject to fiscal oversight by the county superintendent and the Department of Education. So before we get into the financial information, I would like to just show the overview of our district, starting with enrollment. This is something that they've already seen, but I just added one more year here for our multi-year projection. So all of these in green are actuals and then we, the projection is a continuing decline for the budget year in the next two year. Based on the report that we get from our demographer or consultant physician inside. So the next is same enrollment information by school. So this is our actual twenty one, twenty two, and this is the projection for next year by school. As you can see, most of our school are declining except for four. Adelante is projected to grow Orion Alternative School is also projected to grow Clifford and then North Star. This is our historical attendance rates before COVID. Our attendance rate is ninety six percent. This is the one by the count. So out of hundred eighty instructional days on the average, our students are absent seven days approximately on the average. But as you can see in twenty one, twenty two, during the COVID period, the attendance rate dropped by ninety three percent. And since we're all back in person, our projection for the by the year and the next two years, ninety five percent. You can see this, this is not new to you. This is seems to be like anomaly here on our chart that but in twenty twenty one, the state waived the reporting of attendance. They just consider whatever we reported in nineteen twenty to be our report. So this is current year enrollment by ethnicity is the same components as in the previous years. Our largest student population is Hispanic or Latino and followed by white, not Hispanic. This also is our unduplicated pupil counts for twenty one, twenty two. This is the one, the data that generates our supplemental concentration grant monies. So for twenty one, twenty two, this is our enrollment by school. And this is the unduplicated pupil count by school. And as you can see, this, it's not the same for all school site as mentioned by Ms. Wolf in in her LCAP presentation. So for our projection for the budget year and the twenty three, twenty four and the third year, we will still qualify for the concentration portion of the LCFF entitlement. Although, of course, this is just a calculation for us because this is not, this is also funded from our basic aid taxes. For staffing, this is our projection for next year, certificated four hundred twenty three point sixty one FTE, classified three and fifty point eighty four, and then a total of seven hundred seventy four point forty five. Compared to what we presented to you at second interim, there is a reduction here partly because of declining enrollment and also because we have one time positions that we that are included in twenty one, twenty two. Like the virtual teachers that are eliminated in the twenty two, twenty three year. The salary information here is what you're going to see in final one, our general fund, but it does not necessarily relate to the cost of this FTEs because this salary includes what substitutes or non position accounts. So the next few slides is our assumptions in developing the budget for twenty two, twenty three and the next two years, which is required report for budget adoption. I've already mentioned about enrollment and ADA and then the COLA for LCFF calculations, which where we derived funding for our LCAP else supplemental concentration grant. This is one time only in twenty two, twenty three that's included in the budget. It's one thousand five hundred per prior ADA, which translates to about eight point eight million in revenue for the budget year. Basic aid property taxes, this is a change. At second interim, we're projecting two percent, and I'm going to show you why we didn't reach this to three percent in the next slide. And the rest are all based from the May revised budget. Federal revenues, we don't anticipate increase, but in the May revised budget, state revenues, the ongoing portion, not the one time portion are included COLA increase. For local revenues, you'll see a sharp decline in the dollar amount because it's been the practice of the district will not include anything in the budget if we don't have the actual award notification or written commitment. On the expenditure side, we don't have any compensation in these built in the budget for next year or the next two years. We're settled for all bargaining units in twenty one, twenty two. We have that in the budget, but not for the projection years. We only have step on column adjustment for the subsequent two years. Health and welfare remains to be at five percent projection that we have also at second interim. And these are the proposed rates for the next two years and also for the current year. The calculators were showing an increase in twenty two, twenty three, based on the May revise again proposal. The the not the budget that we have for the non personal related expenditure categories, we put in the inflation cost based on the California Consumer Price Index. As you can see here, it's high for twenty two, twenty three. And then three percent and below two percent in twenty four, twenty five. So this is what we used in our multi projections. And most of the the salary portion for the current year are based on positions that we have in our position control system. So here's the reason for the change of the of our basic aid proper tax projection. I did a three year analysis of what's the actual collections are. And as you can see, between nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty one, there's below one percent growth. But when we receive our P two taxes, our P annual, it's not done yet, but basically the same usually. We are showing a two point eight four percent, so rounded it up to three percent. What's interesting in this analysis is that there by the tax category, it the unsecured seems to be the stable ones. It's kind of fluctuating. So I use the total year over year increase in my projection. So this three percent seemed to be corroborated by a report that available on the SFS website. So this one, it's, I don't know if you can see this, but on the secured role only, the increase from twenty 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 one is three percent and on the combined all category taxes is two point eight eight. So again, regarding the status of the district being basic aid, you've heard about the May revise government's proposal where they're putting in a lot of money into LCFF funding. So these on the top here are the the useful components of the LCFF entitlement. We have the base grant and then the supplemental grant, which will get twenty percent more of the base grant if we have unduplicated pupil in our population. And then a concentration grant if we are above fifty five percent. So those students that are above fifty five percent, we get a concentration grant funding and then the add ons, which is actually our twelve thirteen level when of funding when the LCFF funding formula was implemented. So what are the chains that may revise? This is the one that's huge. That, for example, the COLA is six point fifty six percent compared to five point or five point three seven percent of second interim. And this also the change in how the funded ADA was calculated, this is equivalent to additional three point three billion on the LCFF calculator. In the past, we only use the higher of current year or prior ADA in the determination of LCFF entitlement for a school district. So this year in the calculator, this third option is included, which benefited the 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 LCFF districts that have declining enrollment. So now you're going to also fact determine what's the average ADA for the most recent three prior years. And you're going to get funded for the higher of these three. So this is a lot of money for the state budget. And then also included in the LCFF calculator is a TK add on of two thousand eight one eight hundred thirteen per ADA. Which is again, not gonna be received by our district as a basic aid district. And then there is the proposal, also, this is also in the May revised budget, another two point one billion to increase the LCFF base funding. So what's the impact of all these to us? It's that it made the excess taxes is smaller because now we have a higher LCFF entitlement compared to our property taxes rolling only by three percent. So in the past, our excess taxes because of below LCFF state funding is about eleven million. Now it's reduced about half. So again, if you would also notice the concentration, the the amount that's included in the LCAP is over nine million this year in twenty two, twenty three, because of the impact of these change in the calculation of funded ADA. And also because the concentration grant is increased to sixty five percent of the base for those that are above, for the students that are above fifty five percent. So that's, so the question is, are we still basic aid? Yes, we're still basic aid in our projection despite the increase in the LCFF entitlement. So this is the one that I've mentioned earlier. So this is our excess taxes at second interim when we were showing these is about eleven or twelve million. And so the gap now is getting smaller. So if we, if we were an LCFF district, this would have been our funding. And because we're basic aid, our, this is the total funding for the proposed budget year and the next two years. The other impact also on us, because the our district authorized charter schools are not going to be basic aid districts, so they are benefiting from the enhanced LCFF entitlement. So we will notice that this in the taxes is also higher, that we have to share higher in the taxes to them because of the new LCFF calculator. So this is just for information, this is the projection for ADA for the three district authorized charter school. The nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty one are through twenty one, twenty two are actual ADA reported by the district. You'll see here that connect is the same because the twenty twenty one reporting is waived. But you will notice for KIP and Rocket Ship, they have an option to submit a report in twenty twenty one if they're growing. So they decided to submit a report there to get a higher funding for themselves. But you will see that in twenty one, twenty two, all three charter schools also have declining ADA. However, in their projection for next year and the next two years, there's they're projecting growth. So this was provided to us. So we have included in our projection. So we will have to monitor this. Is this going to materialize? Would it be more than what they're projected? So we'll be sharing more in the property taxes or would it be less in in the future years? Okay, so with all the assumptions that we have, I am going to present to you the general fund revenues, as I mentioned in the budget overview for parents. The total revenue in the general fund is hundred twenty six point two million. This is our basic aid property taxes, including the supplemental concentration grant. We get property taxes from Sopa. This is for the special part of the special apportionment. And our federal revenues eight point four, our state is thirty three, and this is the new money that we're getting for the twenty two, twenty three year only. So eight point eight million. Lottery and parcel tax about the same. And then these are local revenues. On the expenditure side, our total expenditure is hundred thirty point eight million for twenty two, twenty three. Big chunk for course of our proper of our expenditures for salaries and benefits for certificated and classified ninety nine point two million. And then books and supplies, services and other operating expenditures. The other outgo that's showing negative here, it's just a combination of several other items that if totaled would show fifty one, but this are like our debt service payment, the indirect costs that we charge to our programs. This is a benefit to the unrestricted general fund if we're charging indirect costs to other programs and other funds. So this is showing the general fund by category, the unrestricted portion here, special education and the categorical programs, all the restricted programs such as our titles, our COVID nineteen resources, ACE's ACE's program, and our local donations are in, some of them are included in the categorical programs. So the unrestricted here includes for our, for this presentation includes our custodial budget, the routine restricted maintenance fund, which in SACS are actually restricted. But for this purpose, it's included in the unrestricted portion of our budget. So as you can see on the special ed side, the total funded revenue from Sopa and federal is 6.4. Our projected expenditure is 26.2. And so we're contributing 19.7 million from unrestricted general fund to special ed program. And then for our categorical programs, this, like I said, this includes the one-time COVID resources, the expanded learning opportunities grant that we got this year and last year are included in this expenditure because we didn't spend any of that money from the 21, 22 year are included in here. So our total is 126.2 and expenditure of 130.8. Our projected ending balance is 10.2, 9.5 million on the unrestricted and the category of programs, 749,000. So here in this slide is showing what are the material differences between the estimated actual current year pre-closing numbers and then our proposed budget for 22, 23. So on the property taxes or LCFF sources in the SACS, the increase is because of the change in our assumption from 2% growth to 3%. The LCFF COLA, as you can notice in 21, 22, it's 8.4 to 9,630,000 for the budget year. And this is the COLA in the LCFF entitlement plus the change in the calculation of funded ADA. Then for the federal revenues, this is basically the COVID stimulus funds. In 21, 22, we put in about 11 million. And that's in accordance with our spending plan for COVID resources. So much of it are one-time in 21, 22. And in 22, 23, we put in about only 4.2 million because much of our allocations are now getting spent. And some of the funds that we have there are intended for two years and others are for three years. So those are included here. And then for the state revenues, the largest change here is the, a combination also of the inclusion of that 8.8 million one time. And then increase in the expanded learning opportunities program funding. So in 21, 22, the funding was 2.1 million. And then in 22, 23, it's about over 6 million. And again, the COVID resources. Local revenues, as I've mentioned, we did not include anything if we don't have any grant over notification or written funding commitment. Oh, sorry. So on the, so on the expenditure side, as I'd mentioned earlier in one of our slides, FT is reduced for the budget year. And then this, the increases in books and supplies and services is, we can't pinpoint exactly what this are because of the combination of, I think for large funding changes for federal and state programs, which I'm going to show in the next slide. The capital outlays one time here in 21, 22. This is the purchase of electric buses and then some equipment for a special ed program. So the large swing here is basically because of these material changes in this program. So in 21, 22, as I mentioned, LTAP expenditure budget is 5.5. And this time because we've included our estimated carryover balances. So 9 million calculated entitlement for 22, 23 plus 2.9 million carryover. So that's the big swing there. And the COVID resources, 11.3 of expenditure in 21, 20 was there. Only 4.2 is included in 22, 23 based on our spending plan. And the state, nothing is included in 22, 23. It's all, it's spent in 21, budgeted in 21, 22. ELOP, as I mentioned, that's the budget, the revenue that we received in 21, 22, 2.1 million was not spent. So we've included it to the over 6 million allocation for 22, 23. So you'll see this increase in 22, 23. Educator effectiveness is one time. We didn't know if it's going to be funded again. So there's, nothing's included in 22, 23. So the next item, this is something new that we, that's in, that we have to do in the budget because we cannot wait for the books to be closed in 21, 22. But there's a need to hire these positions that are in 21, 22, funded from one-time COVID-19 resources. But the need continues for these positions, so they need to hire. And so temporarily, we have coded them and included it in the budget for unrestricted general fund. After the books are closed, we anticipate carryovers from this COVID resources. And so at first interim, this will be removed from unrestricted general fund and coded to whatever the carryovers are from the COVID resources. But for now, it's 26 million is showing in the unrestricted general fund. So now we have here for you the projections for the 22, 23 year, 23, 24 and 24, 25. You will notice that at second interim in our MYP, we're showing already a transfer here from RDA funds. I think it's about 8 million plus. So you will see that there's no transfer proposed here for 22, 23. That's because we got the 8.1, 8.8 million here in state revenue resources. But you can see here, it drops back to 1.3 because that's one time. So that helps us with our funding for this year. And so there's no transfer here in our projection. So in our second interim, the projection here is the ongoing 2.4 transfer and then a 6 million transfer. So that's been eliminated because of that one-time funding. So at the budget committee meeting, we have a good question. What happens is if that 8.8 million does not get into or repurposed or drop in the final enacted budget or trailer bill, then what's going to happen is we're going to be moving our DA funding here earlier than what we're proposing now. So if we're going to know about the trailer bill before next week, then we can make those changes. And if not, we will have to do a 45-day revision if that money is not included in the final state budget for 22, 23 year. So the salaries, as I've mentioned, we use the factors in our, in the increase for next year as in my previous slide. So this slide is showing what is the component of those ending balance that we have here. For the 22, 23 year, you'll see that we are meeting 3%, the minimum state, minimum requirement for, for, or serve for economic uncertainties for the size of our district. You will notice that there are no other monies here. We couldn't meet our board mandated reserve. So there's nothing allocated that. We have few assigned amounts here which are necessary for future obligations that we have. And then we have the legally restricted amount here are the carryovers from those categorical programs that have some funding from federal and state. So since we did receive some money, this was not spent. It's still in the budget. So the, this slide, we just want to show, are we able to fund the proposed transfer that we set in our multi-year projection? Because that's basically coming from accumulated balance from the community redevelopment allocations that we're still continuing to get. So the projected balance in the RDA funds by the end of the current fiscal year is 23.9 million. So if we're going to transfer 23, 24 and 23, 25 million and 24, 25, we still have at the end of 24, 25 year, 8.7 or 25, 26, which as you know, showing the deficit right now that we're looking at is not enough to fully support the general fund needs. So let me go back to the MYP so quick. So here, as you can see, for the current year, we have the 8.8 million here, but we're still showing about 3.6 million in deficit in the unrestricted general fund. For 23, 24, we're putting in 7.4, including the ongoing RDA revenues plus 1.5. That is our over 9 million deficit. And it's growing in the 24, 25 year. So, so in 24, 25, that's projecting 12.6 million with assumptions that we have, which of course does not include compensation increase. So as I mentioned, what happens if we don't get the 8.8 million? So then we will be transferring money sooner. And this will be negative by about 200,000 at the end of 24, 25. I just have made a note here where the information that says the allocation for RDA for the district, it's different from all other school districts. And but for Redwood City School District, the projection is that we're going to receive some allocations from the Revenue Property Tax Trust Fund from RDA's through 29, 23 year only. So that's the MYP for general fund. I'm going to show you the other district funds. So this is our general fund that we discussed. There's not much going on here. Child development program, we see a slight increase here for funding. And that's basically for the universal pre-K next year. Cafeteria, this is our projection based on our contract with Sodexo for 22, 23. And we're anticipating an ending balance of 1.3 million. The forward revenues doesn't generate its own funds. It's, we're moving money from developer fees here to the backward maintenance fund. The building fund, as you can see, we are on the tail end of measure T. So this is a significant drop from last year and previous year. So the projected ending balance is 3.1 million on the GO bonds for Fund 21. That's basically the board reserve that we are still holding on in Fund 21. Capital facilities, this is a combination of developer fees and RDA, as I've shown in the previous slide. And Fund 40 is, we have a few expenditures shown in 21, 22. We don't anticipate expenditures for next year. And so we're projecting 1.9. So overall, district-wide, our projected ending balance is 40, almost 45 million. So what's the next step for us? Of course, as I've mentioned in the budget year, there's no settlement. So that's a necessary expenditure for the district to stay competitive and be able to hire and retain highly qualified staffing. And so this is just a disclosure of what a 1% will be if we are going to negotiation based on the current, the 22, 23 proposed budget. So by collective bargaining unit, that's a, we've got a 1% and overall it's 828,000. And these are just the payroll rates right now. So for certificated staff, it's, this is 0.22. And then this is increased in 22, 23 by the increase alone that about 860,000. And for classified, there's also an increase for next year. So, so actually, so it's about 500,000. So, so those are the ones that are not included in the budget for the compensation increase. And the other one that I also wanted to mention is the continuing need for our students that are COVID-related. Most of the plans that we have for, for the COVID resources are one time, but then it is continuing for the, for the budget year. So for next step, final board approval and adoption is next one, page 29. Statutory deadline for submissions, July 1st. And then like I mentioned, we have 45 calendar days to make changes to the adopted budget. Should there be any material change from the assumptions that we made? And then right now, we will be working on the closing of the 21, 22 books, which are due on or before September 15th. I think this is all that I have for you. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions because Cecilia and I met with Priscilla to go over the budget. So I just want to say thank you to Priscilla and her staff for working so diligently to meet all the deadlines and to get all the extra work that has been piled on due to COVID completed. And I do want to remind us that the TK, the additional TK is really an unfunded mandate. So that is really an expense for us because we don't get the money for that. So again, thank you to Priscilla and her staff.
Any question? I think Mike is talking. Are you unmute Mike?
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay, now I'm in, okay. Priscilla, I say, I was, I thank you for putting together the presentation and the budget. And then I wanted to ask a question about slide 24, which talked about the COVID-19 related expenses temporarily just from the unrestricted general fund. Does that? Does that, does that mean that we should be, we, when the books close, we might see another $2.5 million of funds on that federal line in the restricted funds? And then we'll be able to move expenses over to that? So I guess what I'm wondering is like, if that happens the way that you're projecting, will that close a little bit of the deficit spending in the current budget as we're seeing it now? Okay.
Correct. So that's about 2.9 million.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the
So what, slide number 24, did you say, Mike?
Yeah, slide 24.
Yes, so this one is temporarily there, which added to the deficit. But once we close the books, this should be out of the unrestricted general fund. So this would help the bottom line can be used for other purposes. Correct.
Okay, that's great. It's, you know, it's great to see the extra funding coming from the state. It lets us go on and helps us avoid another year of facing the structural deficit that's in the budget. But we can see it in the blue lines. One, one of these years is going to come. And so, you know, we're always looking at it. It's nice to see that, you know, again, I think it's such a unique situation that we're in. You know, all school districts are coming out of the pandemic now with economic uncertainty. I mean, everything that's going on to be able to have all of these additional funds. And so I think we're focused in the right space by using them as intended, but but it looks daunting, so.
Right, and then the county office, Priscilla, this afternoon, we got information from, you know, capital advisors who works closely with the county office of ed. And one of the items, you know, regarding the discretionary funds, they're still arguing whether to require those funds to be used for employee costs or make them fully discretionary. So I don't know what's going to happen with that 8 million plus dollars. We just got this late this afternoon. And then there's also the major, so some of the major education issues still pending, including deciding on the total increase to the LCFF base beyond the statutory COLA. So whether to provide current year attendance relief to schools are again, that one-time funding that I just mentioned. So they're still grappling with it and hopefully they're hoping by Friday that something will emerge. But if not, we should find, hear more details, hopefully on Monday with next week. But they're still grappling back and forth with that one-time dollar.
So are you, are you saying there that what they're grappling with? Right now, we have it budgeted as we can just use it for unrestricted. So we're covering existing expenses, but they may actually categorize and we have to do additional expenses for it. Okay. Therefore, not really helping. Yeah, okay.
Like I say, I got this late this afternoon. It's about 4:15.
So we will try to incorporate any new information that we can get before adoption. Otherwise, like I said, it would be 45-day revision from that they, the state budget is enacted.
So I wanted to say thank you very much, Priscilla. Really appreciate the report and all the work that you put into it, you and your team. I do think, and I think it's the page that Mike was kind of referring to, that's just a sobering reminder of where we're at. It's the page 26 and, you know, a different page in the actual budget book. But it basically, when you look at the three-year projection and frankly, I think other than maybe the last couple of years, it's always been this really sobering, well, and actually even the last couple of years, because that was really extra money for specific things. So we've just always, you know, I feel like every year, we, you know, we get our budget together and it works and all of that. But it is, it is, you know, when you look two years out, there's clearly some additional work we have to do on the structural side of things and still being able to provide salary increases for our, our teachers and staff because we know we need to do that. So, you know, I know you guys are all thinking about it and you'll come forward with some proposals over the next year. But I think we're really going to have to think about, you know, what are our options for additional revenue generation? As well as, you know, structural budget changes in terms of how we're using the money, you know, with different staffing and things like that. And then the other thing that's just really concerning that I know every district is dealing with is just the increases in special ed that are not getting funded by the state and federal government. And again, Maria, your point on the TK, you know, this is another very huge unfunded mandate. And I know all of us are advocating on a regular basis, but I think we're just gonna have to try to double down again on this because it's really eating away at, at a large portion of our budget and they're, and they're not paying for it, right? So we know the students need the services and were required to give the services, but they're not paying for it. So I know I'm kind of a broken record on this one, but it's, it's hard when we look at our budget. It's, it's a big chunk that's not being paid for.
We had a meeting with SALPA, I think, last week. And the, the bad news is that the SALPA is not getting the same type of funded calculation. So in LCFF, they have enhanced it by using three options prior to current year and average three years. They did not want to do that with SALPA and SALPA would have benefited a lot if they implemented it. So they're still in advocacy. They are advocating to have that also implemented in the calculation of SALPA funding. So hopefully they will also get that included for SALPA allocation.
So thank you again, Priscilla. As Maria mentioned, we do sit on the committee. Just one question, when we talk about whether we're going to be switching back from basic aid, for sure, we know for the next three years, we are not. Do we know if after the three years, there may be a possibility? Or do we know exactly that we won't switch back?
Based on, on what I know now, because I, John, as, as John mentioned, the state's still planning to add more on the LCFF-based funding. That's, I think, 2.1 billion more that is not included in our LCFF calculation because we don't know where that money go and how it's going to be factored in the LCFF. But I did a separate version where I put in the 2.1 billion. What's going to happen is just reduces our excess taxes down again to about 2.5 million, but we will remain basic aid district. So I'm projecting 3% growth, but based on the information that we know about all the developments that are happening in Redwood City, it might be, 3% might be a conservative projection. So I don't anticipate Redwood City switching back to LCFF-funded district unless the state will put 20% of Prop 98 funding to LCFF, which would be a legislation. But I, right now, I don't anticipate the Redwood City district switching back in the, in several years in the future.
Great, thank you. Jan, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, thanks. Thank you again, Priscilla. Moving forward, 14.4, 202223, statement of reasons for reserved and excess of the minimum state recommended level.
So that one, I'm, I'm not sure if you have further questions for me. It's a one-page requirement, which is kind of related to these information that I shared with you on the components of fund balance. Let me share that back again. So this is that disclosure. They just wanted to know why we're keeping these assigned amounts here. And so we have to explain these assigned dollars here because that is in excess of our 3%. So let me share that document with you real quick. So can you see this or not yet? Okay, sorry. So this is also required for, to be presented for public hearing. As indicated here, this is required by ed code. The rationale for this legislation is that the school districts are required to spend the money for the students that generated it. So it's not putting it all in fund balance for future years where the students of the current year are not benefiting. The second reason is that the state has now established the rainy day fund. So the district should be using whatever allocation that they have for them to meet the students' need. But for us, the one that are assigned and unassigned is 5.6 million, which excludes the legally restricted, the categorical program fund balances. And so the one that's in excess of the 3% minimum is only 1.8 million. And those are this one. So we always have these about 285,000 for Affordable Care Act healthcare reform because these are, are, are still continuing to be audited. So if we have any obligations, then we're gonna tap these assigned amounts. And this 1.4 is the carryover of unspent unrestricted dollars that will be fully spent in the following year. So this is our disclosure for the statement of reasons. Are there any questions?
I don't think we have any questions. Thank you, Priscilla. Under action items, 15.1, recommendation regarding adoption of Resolution 40, the education protection account for fiscal year 202223.
So this amount is fixed $200 per ADA that we're getting. So for next year, it's 1.3 million. It's just required to be spent, not for administrator salaries. And we have to disclose what we're using it for. So it's really used for instructional purposes. It's partly pays for salaries and benefits of classroom teachers.
Are there any questions? Or if not, can I please get a motion to approve action item 15.1?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Rocco, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Lokum.
Aye.
Thank you. Board and Superintendent reports, 16.1, report from board members and superintendent.
I don't have any.
I don't think I have anything from last, since last week either.
So Janet and I attended the, well, and actually John as well. And so did Petrinia, I believe, from our district. We, we all attended the Redwood City Together Retreat we had on Thursday. And we may have already mentioned this, but if we didn't mention it, our school district will be the lead for the next year. So John will be the executive. I guess it's, it's, what is it? We have the leadership team and the, yeah, the executive committee. So you'll be the leader of the executive committee. And then Janet and I will need to talk about how we're sharing responsibilities. The last couple of folks have done a co-chair, which seemed to work pretty well. But Janet and I will need to talk about what we're gonna do. And then I also attended a Samatao County School Boards Association Retreat on Friday for several hours. And we have lots of good ideas and that'll be coming forward to the whole county soon in terms of different events and that sort of thing. And we are talking about bringing back the Kent Awards in person, but maybe trying to do it in April instead of May because May is such a busy time for everybody. So we do need to look at spring breaks and stuff like that. Yeah. And we'll do, oh, and it's going to be a combination Kent Awards for this year and last year because this year was kind of a weird year.
I just have the Redwood City Together meeting.
And I don't have no, nothing to report.
I don't either. Redwood City Together, that was it.
Under information, 17.1, information on Samatao County Investment Fund for May 2022. Are there any questions? No, thank you. Correspondence?
I, I think we got a few follow-up emails as a result of the North Star conversation last week. I think many of us got some of those.
Okay, thank you. Other business suggested items for future agenda? Are there any?
One more meeting.
Board agenda calendar, 20.1, changes to the board agenda schedule? No changes? Thanks.
Is that one just starting at seven? Is, or is, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Great. So can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Before we do that, is today Ellie's last day or is it next week?
Next week.
Next week.
Okay.
Yes, because you're right. We need to make sure that we recognize Ellie.
Yes.
Yeah, I asked her on the same thing.
Thanks. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All second.
Great, all those on paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Maria and Janet, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
See you guys next week.
Yeah, bye, Priscilla. Thank you.